Welcome back to the council. The 381th full council meeting. So, before we go into the business of the DDC, we have to open the door. I want to welcome everybody in this meeting. The DDC, you're welcome. Councilors, management, and those who are broadcasting with their family are welcome to this full council. We're going to item one point one, which is the notice of confirmation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Notice is here by given that the 381st regular full council meeting will be held in the council chamber on Tuesday, the 28th of February, 2023, at 16:30 hours. To discuss the matter set forth in the council.
Do we have any apologies?
Thank you. We have received any apologies. Thank you.
So, going to item 13, which is confirmation and matters arising from previous minutes. We'll go page by page. Page two. Page three. Page four. Page five. Page six. Page seven. Page eight. Page nine. This is the last one. If there is no person from the previous meeting, may we go for adoption?
Yes, because it's true, it's true.
Let's now go to item 14, which is communication by the council chair person. I don't have much to communicate, but to let the house know that on Friday, we're going for mega festival days. And Sabito council, one, two hours. One, the first one was the one, "See for good corporate governance of the year." This is the legend that you know. The second one seems like an individual accolade, which was won by Mr. Fancin Shaw, our finance director. And the one partner, which was won by the most outstanding person. And the award is for local authority leader of the year. I think this award for Mr. Shaw is not winning it on the period when he is the finance director. I think he won it when he was the acting town secretary. Because if you are a finance director, you are not the lead of the town sector. So, I think he won it during the time he was acting as the town secretary. Before we go to committee reports, I realize that the three attendants of this full council. So, for us to debate, to include them in our agenda, we must have all agree. So, many councilor propose the other one, second, for each of the three items. We start by the first item, which is what is called local in line. No proposal, second, so that we discuss. Then the second item, no proposal for out in this meeting. Second. The third one is prepaid parking fees. Okay, I think we will now go to the next item, which is committee reports. We start by the House and the rest of the committees' comments. Page 16.
Page 17.
Page 17. It's on page 10. Page 10.
Page 10.
Thank you. Page 01, 02, 03. The letter was 15 numbers, resident, signature, state of development, and the max. The combination is that the above section be approved. Page 02, 02, 23. The combination, one, that you should not name for beauty manager. And the number 10 for the tumor, but 10 for the eggs. But so is 5, 10, 5, 10, 2, 2, 3. The combination, that you should not name for number 10, so a replay. November, holidays, tender. November, in order, paper on state number, DC1308, 10, 5, be approved. Page 04, 02, 2, 3. The recommendation is that an application be made to central government through the Ministry of Local Government and Public Works for expansion of Sabito council boundaries by incorporation of nearby A2 funds and incorporation of adjacent private land into Sabito council administration. Page 05, 02, 2, 3. That the Sabito council's tents, property repossession procedure might not be approved. Page 06, 02, 2, 3. There is a table showing state numbers, the names, and the recommendations. I want you to know that some of these tents are on the table. The people did not have property ownership papers. And these people are requesting for their list to be approved. So, the recommendation is that the above list request be approved. I'm done, worship. Thank you, Councilor. Do we have any contributions to the recommendation as read out by the House and Chair? Councilor. Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome to the move by Page 06, 02, 3.
Malisa, you're not a very good. You're not going to be able to get this document. By that time, the paper is not going to work. So, I'm not saying that. So, I'm not saying that the paper is not working. Which is not working, it's not working. Because I'm not going to make developments, which is not working. This system is not working. But you're not going to have this document. So, I don't want that. So, I don't want to have this document. That's what I want. Are you answered, Councilor?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. You're not sure.
Councilor, I said, are you answered on the first question that you asked?
I'm not sure.
Which part is answered?
The part that is not answered. Because it's not working. I'm not sure. It's not working. It's not working. I'm not sure. It's not working. I'm not sure. You don't want to do that. Then it's not working.
Probably my team will come there. I'm not sure. 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 At the full council meeting, I can't see. I can't see. So, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I think it's been two months ago. So, I'm not sure. 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 Because I'm not sure. 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 Because I'm not sure. I'm not sure. All these people, they don't want to have this document. As soon as they want to have this document, there should be supporting council resolution. I say, we don't want to have that. I don't want to have this document. There's no one who is going to connect water, or to put a drill, or to construct anything. I see now this document. So, I don't want to have this document. I'm not sure. I'm not sure. In terms of my risk, the family, my wife, and I, they got it. And I can't see. Because I'm not sure. I don't want to have that. I'm not sure. My paper, I can't so ring. I'm not sure. Seventies, sixties, almost. So, I think that, like, they are giving information. Because they're getting in our system. And they don't want to have that. They don't want to do that. But I'm not sure. I don't want to have that. But I don't want to have that. I don't want to have that. And I don't want to do that. I don't want to do that. But I don't want to have that. I don't want to have that. Also, I don't want to have this after. For the decision, I don't want to have that. But I'm not sure. 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 Okay, thank you. I think you answered. Your Councilor Chief, could you have a question?
Of course, I have a question, yes, but I also don't know.
Okay. The first chair.
Thank you. I want to find out. So, our system may not have the records. What do we have in place to prove that whoever is coming here is the bona fide owner of a state tent? Since we are saying in situ, we don't have records showing. Like, do you want to take a deep look? You said seventies?
It's late seventies.
Yes. At least you are saying, we are aware of DMIs. What measures have we put in place to safeguard against those who may come? You are serious. It's not issues. I can't say inheritance. It's not easy. But I don't know. But I don't know. But what we have in place to safeguard against issues like this?
I'm not sure. First chair. The whole thing is, you know, it's not good to let system not know. You don't want to eat our computers. I upload information, the master's AS. I got it. I don't want to system. And I upload from 2013 to 2014. And they would believe. But that period, you know, information, you don't upload. You don't correct information. My students, they don't want to. They don't want to. They don't want to. But I'm not 2013, 2014. By input, the system, you know, into the computers. Information, you know, they don't correct. Also, we go all the way to verify. If you check some, my state files, how? Or what I'm going to my state files. As far as I'm getting information, I'm getting as much as I can. Most of the documents. So, it's not good. Yes, I got it. But what do you mean? Do you know where the state is? Because we also go a step further, even to ask the council for that word. But I don't want to. I don't want to. Do you want to? You can ask the story. I talked to him. He was like, I don't want to. I don't want to. Do you want to? He said, I don't want to. I don't want to. I don't want to. Then it's too bad. The machine, I don't want to. I don't want to. Next, the system, I don't want to. So, I don't want to. I don't want to. Thank you, Chair.
I don't know. So, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I don't know. Let's move forward. But I feel I don't know.
I'm not sure. I don't know. We are talking about the list. But I don't think I'm not sure. I don't know. So, I don't think I'm not sure. I don't want to. 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 First document, I don't want to. I don't want to. So, I don't want to.
I don't want to. I don't want to. But it's up to this house. But it's up to this house. But it's up to this house. I'm very comfortable not to give them my list. For now, we use good information. I don't want to say, maybe the system will to get your base. But if council feels, we have for one reason or the other. Director, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I think we would be very happy to send them back home. I don't want to. So, I don't want to. I don't want to. I don't want to. That's what you're doing. Because you want to. But if you can't refuse, that is a wrong method. But if you want to, you also be very happy to do that.
I don't think there is a right. First chair, I think just wanted to ask a tea. That the real owner of the state, he doesn't want to. State, yeah. Not to, yeah, but it's not to. Just to talk to him. But to talk to him, he said, I didn't want this. Probably, what do you mean, not want this? But the state, I don't want to. Can I, can I, can I, can I sing? Can I sing? I don't want to. I don't want this. Do you want this?
This was the question.
Councilor, I'm there.
In the dog's, you know, it's true. I was there. Because I don't want to. I don't want to. I don't want to. I'm not sure. Because I don't want to. Councilor, I don't know. Councilor.
Okay. Because it's seventy, eighty. So, when I'm in my location, I don't want to. It's a piece. And I want to make developers. So, I'm fighting to make developers, I'm not seeing that. I don't want to. 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 Then it's not easy. I don't want to. So, I'm not sure. I don't want to. I don't want to. I don't know. Twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. I don't want to. I don't want to. So, I don't want to. I don't want to. I don't want to. So, I don't want to. I don't want to. Do you want to? I don't want to. I don't want to. I don't want to. Do you want to? Then I don't want to. So, I don't want to. I don't want to. I don't want to.
Okay. Councilor.
Then, yes, Chair. Page 04, 02, 3. That in application, we made to send to government. The Ministry of Local Government, it's expansion of the Sabito council boundaries. By cooperating nearby A2 funds. This is important. The A2 funds are sure was written to mention or to identify them. That's why I cooperate. And then, like, my house, it needs cover this combination. It's still a partnership. I have my A2 funds. And adjacent, adjacent, like, general. Our adjacent is adjacent outside. I don't want to. I don't want to. I don't want to. I don't want to. Because I'm not sure. I don't want to. I don't want to. Space symmetry. I don't want to. I don't want to. Symmetry, space. And I understand, my resolution, I don't want to. Way big. I don't want to. I don't want to. This is not a, this is a. But if we don't come to get it, it will. The statement, the A2 funds, I don't want to. This is not a clarification in that specific solution. And the person is too guilty. Answer.
Director. I'm not sure. The council, I'm sorry. I'm not sure. I have the last question. I'm not sure. But I'm going to compensation. For symmetry. I think transection. I don't want to. It's council, we feel we should not be seen to compensate for state lead. Because it's part of the state. We don't want to. I assume it's the way. Therefore, we cannot be seen to compensate. To back up the state. Because it's not today. Because I don't want to. Of the claim. That's why we, I'm mute this idea. But it's not. It's not. My A2 funds, I don't want to. I don't want to. Because that's the way we should be going. I don't want to. My A2 funds, I don't want to. I don't want to. They don't want to. But it's a very long process. I think it is. But I don't want to. I don't want to. This is limited. I see, I think, I apply. They will send a delegation or commission. It will, it will. So, I don't want to. Because I'm not to see the commission. It will to deal with those matters. Which is, I don't want to. And I don't want to. Sabito council. I don't want to. They will send a commission to. I don't want to. I don't want to.
Yeah. I don't want to. I'm not sure. I don't want to. I don't want to.
I don't want to. Thank you very much, Chair. Yeah. He outconquer the council attack. Because if you want to expand, simply just expand. Don't put it in the first place. Because what we're general from the way to go. Remember, the minister has been on record to say more land is up than going later. We are, you know, expanding into productive agricultural land. And it, when we should be densified. But at which issue, it's us. It's us, we need to have a strong reason to convince the minister. Why do you want extra land and where? For what purposes? And it, minister, who is, no, no, this is justification for him to say, Joshua, go later. And it, against what he has pronounced. But Joshua, Sabito council, it's impossible. So, resolution, you know, you're excellent. Guys, I'm going, general, I don't want to. I don't want to. You don't want to. Because it's not that. So, I don't want to. Let's create justification. Why? Yes, he, 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 he. He would do that. I don't want to. We're learning that. We're not TD. And then, guys, we, guys, we're saying, we're just, that is systematic. That, that, so many, it is. I think it's more like a proposal. I don't want to. But the minister, when I know, I don't want to. Then it becomes easier for us. But it's actionable, yes, but let's make it smarter.
Smart, smart, yes, I wish. Thank you, Minister.
The DDC has some. Same as the House and the Red. The issue of compensation, council resolved. But the good thing is incrementation may not be partially done. In no least agreement, it's signed. So, once we get this land following the proposed process, we simply rescind the previous reservation. It was an act of desperation. We had seen that we are running out of area of space. So, it negotiated, the previous council negotiated with Mr. Mawoko. So that he would give us five hectares, if I'm not mistaken, in exchange of an industrial stand and a residential estate. The reservation has not been implemented. So, it can as well be rescinded. Because advice that we got from the DDC's office is that the reservation. is that the reservation passed to us so the farms being referred to is the one owned by Mr Maoko and the other one owned by Mr Namad so to make the reservations eh smart we will find out eh the exact amount of the farm because we know the beneficiaries but when we talk of this maybe to be not charged of what what extension we can get that from Mr TDC's office Minister of Land
Maybe just to estimate nah iti kava you cannot enter into any agreement eh with Maoko that you like in the states the Minister of Land and the party's she'll be chooyo kansi there is to be a process here exit from the Minister of Land to the Minister of Flora you see na ma oku ni kansi which are minister logic and limits you see now atisha da tuma shkayu wuta tuta saman you ocha ko juu we rido ah no baba
Ma ma nyazo goa handswa dite
Ah na handswa umga TDC's house nyazo tuu flora this is another category but at the same time eh aniso zila muma tingu eh eswa esha eno dunfunga puti nyayanga yu ne agents the DDC va tinta iti ah sunta la eh ayosin director tula arit tuta sunta wa ngua eh my fear now is atina goa ni ngua iti ma kua wakunguwa suno sandi kandiri umga da tuku na Maxnas peace then zuzo zatwa ngua pama feh the Ocras tagnosiwa zamakuru sijaa and it is iti atina bata ni zama issues ma viri kaya Mr Maoko yanga zara wussepa ito kusisi specifically katiwa katiwa zushi we eh probably kana fana eh way shortcut si ga yu ne kono ne shen puti yimbe mede that way iti wa na space ma kua then isu so di taunani na kuke expand that's another issue ya kara inimi sile wu zushi we take a good one there is a good one I think umga kambida eh interface na minister ya sini faseta kampa tahi smart summit if you remember but it never umga wa ba imtasa nchiya oni di zuka eh bafa ulugo tuti zaga tili wa minister tula land ayi benanga land expand minister waga made it category like client akuna ati bojwa land just for sa dunfunga ye wa tuta tya ni kafura katiwa dunfunga their deer mano kanga zamaksha this is a shame you zia ita committee geta eh 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 challenge eliminate ufi chi was still sitting on that time sa katiwa ziti tata zbata ni zaga no kude kanda kanda puti osho yeah
We might be behind the time but there's a course that we need to follow to process eh the minister being women we have a DTC we can send a delegation maybe the council chair the works and planning committee chair the housing committee chair to the PTC the PTC will help us approach the minister so that the issues treated with the agents it deserves because convincing the minister that we're running out of area of space definitely into something but whilst these processes are being done we should start thinking outside the box we are left to taza consume it we need to go and develop the place push it up and maybe fence it because it is people are being very nervous with the consent of the village and to an authority we have taza it's now happy
Kanzera
Yeah bata ni kana dite for example iti fati shon puti issues ma farms eh da doa ni tusenwa goyimulad
Also our master plan eh engineer and master plan eh rushi gop master plan
Brogoz
Yeah so those must never justify puti ma farms eh I don't know about those master plan but I got the DTC's why oh nasita ra ita we are kanya sona it is confidence
Okay Eh chawaka
That's a better eh bana ni kana dite puti fana puti issues to puti my farms eh ipa juza doa atu da witi ti singa zo atu chiwa kati eh don't say ariyoksim was in a year I changed I see the same people who own that those farms eh ipa juza yesu wa udo ma diva eh two stands sa katiwa zuti siya no muna kudi a farm lagi eh puti kanzu doa ne diva you know siya miss wasi
Nena opindura mufunza kanzera espere but it is it is matches so tao wa na kanzera ma taka puti minister waga ti atidi agriculture landi no inator wa ni ma epe puti wase ma stand but eh I think kanzera espere doctora foma eh ngia taka mo taka toona plan eh eh muu prase tori fatuze eh ati no tuta sera joku ti tina di I think umga je kesa kese niya kazi espere kasi no baba puti taka toona plan eh puti kune so doctora kama two de two de maybe muma bato metiri puti ma kati the minister amudini eh atidi wa ba mshi kura okon we agriculture is
Yeah The land we are referring to is state land and the land which kanzera espere is probably referring to or the land which are referring to which you brought in the previous full council reservation is not state land that is probably progress with title deeds so if you put title to your land you can do whatever you please with that land the area we are talking about is state land eh the 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 land which are acquired through the land reform program so that is state land it's different from the Aluapu project it's different from the Sapporo's reservation the area we are referring to is the two farms along the river to the right and to the left because that is farm you can't
Kanzera
So umgo puti ni ni kani kawe najeje
So kanzera espere na nisa na go na kua oku ni njanga
Ah sorry da ndi nda piri wa eh katiwa nago pete sorry chairman umgo puti kana muka ti so suti eh landi yesi eh ten kilometers twenty kilometers wu pa mungu inenge inema nineteen ninety eh this eh landi yu eh yesi ino tali siba puti kana tango tira zukura omele ino kuna ah wa ali juema landi we are oku ojun jojun no inka nao nao umgo juwa kana tuki zorage it's either issues kanzu tiri no kua omegom kana mimi mitcha bata junjaga juka no puti nenge ratu but it's dead since tango no kura alisa jamu you for us it is a tip kampa jo panie paraso kanti swa puti shalunzi ababai ababai
Okay eh kanzera espere The farms they are referring to I'm not referring to any farmer I want to answer even to explain that she kama yuko na lo inenge a part of the Sapporo Council as it remains private property inenge amo zainko but it went to a bound that is Sapporo Council issues to kumti na land eh it is now eh eh what we want to address is the issue of burial space those are the three and reservation to council
Eh kanzera to ma mura tawala kana mushi na na umgo so puti tanga that that eh eh oh shok eh oh kimo katiwa umga niya eh dani eh intu intu eh subject yai Yeah yeah katiwa tura butaro eh justice that was we niye iti tanga puti resolution eh it is smart umga puti resolution eh it is smart kana tata shika so I think kana anume anume best kani recommendation kanzera
Ah I'm proposing recommendation
Okay wa handsa na kanzera espere I am proposing to add puti recommendation kana no sekonda sekonda
Sorry sorry chairman